States of America. And the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We have some minutes to approve. Has everyone had an opportunity to review both the June twenty fifth and the July ninth meeting minutes?
Yes, yes, I am going to abstain from the last meeting, because I did not attend.
And I have a motion then if there are no edits to approve the June twenty fifth. Meeting minutes, I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from June twenty fifth, twenty four. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve the July nine? Do I have a second? Second, all in favor? Aye. So who do we have joining us today?
Well, Madam Chair, we have your colleague, Mr. Peonisa. We have Nancy Cagiano and we have Jeremy Oakes.
Hello and welcome. And we also have Ben.
Ben Pierce.
Has anyone received any community input or correspondence?
Um, I've actually heard a lot of good feedback about all the work you had done on the classroom side saying wonderful.
Thanks to people seeing that.
Oh, there's some people are saying, yeah, well, it's very evident. Like it looks really nice with all of the additional. Equipment that you that we have out there and then all of the additional like garden beds and the new trees that were planted.
If I may add, like to just give some credit to Diana Brandy, who we hired to do that work as well as DL landscaping that helped out.
That's great.
That was done with the use of some of the last of our COVID money for the idea of health and wellness. For the students so that they could have more enjoyment at that area. And we also lost some trees recently due to disease. And so that was an effort to replace those.
Any other community? Would anyone that is out there remotely like to speak? Okay, moving on to the examination and authorization for payment of bills.
There's a packet of bills going around and the list is. Tony P would say is fairly difficult this time of year. And who you'll be acting upon a total of one twenty four, four nineteen ninety five. The Home Depot Pro or Custodial Supplies. Horizon is a combination of cell phone reimbursement and. School phone, specialty pork is school supplies, and re-elevators and interim inspection. Northeast Harvard Consortium, the ten thousand is a lack of a better word than anti-up fee. Whether you had any kids there or not, to be a member of it costs you ten thousand just to have access to it. And it's separate than what you may pay for tuition. So everybody pays ten thousand right up front. And then if you send a child, it's at whatever that full rate is, even though it's reduced compared to any other outside program you might have. And then there's the first set of bills for the Northeast consortium of kids that we have placed. Amazon is school supplies. Uh, Kevin just talked about Diane Brandy and Healy Bus is the first monthly payment for their contract. Remember that includes a little surcharge built into it from last year because of the pickup issues at Swamp Stock for kids. And that has to be recognized. National three is power related. A one exterminators is. Health friendly, safe road type traps that are placed around. So good for anyone. Except a road can make open to that. It doesn't bear really well with that. Uh, scene collaborative is special ed. Easter seals are main is a special ed placement. Working gear is custodial uniforms by their agreement. Learning without tears is a new program that Prince Lander's got approved. Action ambulance is actually instead of transportation. Uh, folly, a folate is has to do with library books. Bowling is where we had received contracted services for the summer occupational therapist. Now you have a occupational therapist on your staff. Yeah, carpet cleaning, one hand lumber is custodial supplies, the Northeast Air Solutions. Is to do with the air conditioning system. Uh, mass association superintendent is your measure of your membership. Robert Debo is his cell phone reimbursement and his fingerprinting. And discrimination and harassment solutions has to be paid. Evil to be propagated for and it was covered from last year's budget. So that money is not coming out of active money now. It was held over as a estimate. I think it may have been a little bit higher than that, that you actually encountered. That's the final bill, the final report from the matter involved was completed. So you're you're paid in full in regard to those services. And that would constitute the total of one twenty four for nineteen ninety five.
One twenty four, four nineteen ninety five. Okay, there's just a typo on this document that we signed, so I just crossed it out and I'll initial it. Okay? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the invoices for the meeting of eight twenty seven, twenty four, which come to the total of one twenty four thousand, four hundred nineteen dollars and ninety five cents.
Is that a good motion?
Excellent. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Hey, there's uh, three items on it. One is there is the final determination of the free cash amount from the. On public schools to the town of Nahant. Uh, it's floated around for a while and there's a big. Eighty, I'm gonna find that. Well, I think we'll come back and then I thought I had it written.
No.
I'll find it. There's no information, but it's eighty six in June. Isn't the two or three hundred thousand that's on here? Uh, in terms of my meeting with the Swansville Superintendent. I went over there and that was their middle school principal and the superintendent who I knew pretty well from my time in Rockport. On the seventh of August. Um, didn't even have to plead. I just said, be great if we could cooperate on some things. They said, sure, we'll do that. Across country, our fifth and sixth graders are able to participate in that now. Uh, we've got several kids involved in that and I actually don't give the names, but I'll tell you the numbers.
Oh, that's wonderful. That is great. Yes.
For cross country, we have two sixth graders and one fifth grader who are interested in doing that.
Great.
Um, outdoor track, um, they approved that for the spring. Something with the relationship worked well in the fall across country. And while there are two kids interested in that, both fifth graders, both fifth grade girls actually in that particular group. Um, they also allowed our fifth and sixth graders who would become eligible for the National Honor Society. I think Beth brought it up last time that that would be something maybe to look into. And they will run service type opportunities throughout the year for the kids at the middle school, which begins over there in grade five and six. And our kids would normally have access to that. So when they go to apply. For National Honor Society entrance, our kids don't necessarily have a long rest of activities they participate in. So our kids will be invited to join in those activities when they hold them. And we have two fifth graders and one sixth grader interested in that. They also said they're very interested in doing shared PD. But schedules would have to be synchronized so that our half day would have to be there half day, our full day would have to be there full day. But would they have no problem with us piggybacking on their PD or or coming to ours, but there have to be synchronization. Also willing to show me a nice conference room where I could meet with students that were in the high school on Swampstead and do the. Exit entrance interview kind of questions about how are things going? What'd you miss? You know, what kind of gaps were out there from your perspective? And what's good about Swampstead? What did you change? And all those kinds of things. And I'll probably do the first one in October and then make another one after the first of the year, probably three times during the year. Just to give kids a chance on for the pizza and invite them to come.
It's great.
Whoever whoever comes comes then. So.
Yeah.
We used to be senior exit interviews at the high school I was at. Those kids were very upfront about their experience. And serious about it, professional about it. You can say to them, you know, you're you're done. Don't you want the school to be better for those behind you? And they took that pledge and would say, yeah, this this was good. I wish we'd had that. Um, they even went into sort of who their better instructors were and who. Um, might have been able to improve in certain areas. It's all confidential. And we just carry it back. And I think it was their party gift back to that high school. So I think the same kind of thing should be there for your kids, talking about their experience all the way up. But we are going to allow that. They also talked about allowing teacher exchanges and curriculum synchronization. They're very interested in being part of that. On September third, which is next Tuesday, first day we come back from the long weekend. Uh, Matt Morneau is coming over from the police department to do an hour long presentation on. School safety type issues and lockdowns, not only as a review for present staff, but as a. New information session for the new buyers. And then I'd like to publicly thank DPW director Zach Taylor for. Responding and getting our contracted service to manipulate the lines out front. And made them wider. It's a complaint that if you park there, you had an SUV, you didn't get your doors open in front of the school. So they eliminated a couple of spots and widened those lines out. And I noticed that they had done the uh, the parking lot at the door four side as well. Uh, they couldn't get to that initially because we had graciously allowed trailers to start there and became a beautiful summer home. And the individual that putting up that home is interested in making a donation to the school.
Oh, great. That's wonderful.
Our idea and love to have that.
Oh, it's great.
Excellent. Sort of win-win kind of situation.
Well, I greatly appreciate it that my car could successfully fit into the space this morning. So thank you.
Two other things that I have are the parent and student survey response to me. Two other things that I have are the parent and student uh, survey response to me has improved a little bit. I extended the deadline to the first part of September. Uh, we had a total of nineteen parents who gave us feedback. And uh, it went from just one staff member to now seven, which is mostly teachers. Uh, I gave all you folks access to be able to see the responses. But it's different than your survey that you did that you were gonna redo in the spring. It was more of my entry knowledge. And uh, I don't think there was any new issues that, that sprung up. You should have gotten a link to both of those surveys to be able to read those responses.
Rob, did you say that um, you're gonna continue trying to get more teachers? Finally, I, I love that you did the, well, the opening survey. I think that's so smart as this year intended to do. And I, I just was like, I wish more teachers than seven had responded. Cause I think you have, what do we have, thirty staff total?
Thirty staff, fourteen uh, teachers.
And it went out to everybody. We still have time. Yeah.
I think in part of that survey, one of those questions had them identify, were they support staff or teaching staff? I think there's only one support staff, so that means six active teaching staff members. The, the new ones.
Right.
Though they wouldn't have any ability to respond to that.
Yeah.
So there were three or, three or four of those. A couple were just the tail end of the year. I think you got seventy-five percent of the teacher's staff that responded. And uh, some were long comment.
Yeah, no, no.
But it's good and some were pretty short response.
So is it, is it closed now? For the, for the staff, other staff?
I haven't put the closure in the link. But I think I said September, probably this Friday.
This Friday. Meaning in two, in three days.
It's gonna be closed so that I would be able to look at the results and I can certainly come back and issue a report at the next meeting of the themes.
Yep.
Without going into, you know, the trends and themes.
Yeah.
And I think you'll find that they interface with the kind of issues that you folks are talking about.
I think if you could do another push just to see for some of the people that didn't respond, I think it would be a good idea to try to hit the number up a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, uh, and because it's an opening survey, it probably doesn't matter whether it's more teachers or especially the folks that are not teachers taking it, but you know, cause that was less.
Closure, so I can certainly.
And I mean.
Follow up.
You deserve to have some closure, but yeah. Um, can I go back to, I had a couple of questions about some of the things you reported on before, one comment is, um, I was always willing to see the, oh, the, the door open to some of the points Swamp Stot has, you know? Um, not just the Honor Society, which wasn't, wasn't me, but I was a live supporter of it. I think it might have been.
Related as a, as a public influence, I think.
Okay, maybe. Um, and um, I'd love, like, you may have another fifth grader on your cross-country offerings, so, uh, cause my son is interested. I just wanted to have a quick conversation with him and make sure that was gonna be okay. But um, but I love that. I just, I, I think that's exactly the type of thing that we should do. I love the idea of like, uh, doing some PD and sharing those resources together. Um, feels like the right thing to do.
That's true for those kids too, you know, and you probably fifth grader, they're gonna go over and go four days a week in Swamp Stot with kids they don't necessarily know and that's a
Great, yeah.
Big time.
Right, it's, it's totally great. Um, and I think it's the type of thing that, you know, um, is gonna be engaged on a lot of these press. So I really, um, yeah, I really appreciated that. I, um, there is, as you were talking about, um, we went from talking about those opportunities to something else and anything of numbers and just, you know, as a fifth grade parent, watching the numbers window down, you know? Um, and there has been a lot of conversation about that. There are only four boys left in the fifth grade right now and the class has gone from like, I think nineteen to, in, I mean, four left just in the last few months, like a couple of months before it's blended and then three over the summer. And so, you know, that's definitely being watched by parents out there and there has not been a formal, please bring this to school committee comment. But at every gathering I'm at in Nahon over the past, you know, couple, two to three weeks, people are talking about, um, that and just, um, going with exit interviews. So that led up to a suggestion. Is, are you also, are, could you do exit interviews with families that have opted to leave, you know? And um, or maybe could somebody at the Johnson School, just so that we can learn the reasons why. Um, you know, that parents are choosing one thing over another and they may be more free to talk about that as they are leaving, right? And similar to what you said about the high school students wanting to give back. You know, there, I know some of the families who have left and I know that they have like strong um, feelings of care in the Johnson School. Um, and we should learn from what could have been different and maybe some things we wouldn't be able to make different, but some things that we could.
And I think like it's probably off for either a face-to-face or a phone call, one of those anonymous type surveys, you know?
Uh, yeah, truthfully, I didn't know that the numbers had dropped in their class until today when I saw that there was twelve. And so I knew of one child that was leaving right before school ended, but I think four, three or four more since then. So I was kind of shocked to learn that today. Um, so that would be helpful, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, if I may, um, we have, I had a student transfer survey upcoming. Um, so I have a, a Google form that I've used in the past and we've had the, a, a blip. And it asks where you're going. Uh, it asks, uh, what's the most significant reason for looking for a different school? Uh, are there programs? And then it's an open response question. So, um, I could start with that. If that'd be helpful, since I mentioned families have left.
Yeah. Yeah.
I was, I was about, uh, at the meeting on September twenty-fourth. I'll be away at my daughter's wedding.
Oh, congratulations.
I will zoom in to that.
Uh, sorry, which one?
Actually be in the month, yeah.
Okay.
But if I can, if it's okay to zoom in, because that'll be have to change the
Twenty-third?
Date of the twenty-fourth.
Of September?
September.
Would you like to change?
Oh, no, it's a good one, so that you don't have to worry about zooming in.
Guys, I have fun. Just whatever, that's okay.
Is the wedding that day?
Wedding's not decided, it's all sorts of.
No, sure, but there's. I mean, I don't mind pre-changing it. I don't mind changing it either.
Right, that would actually help me because I have a work event that night that I was debating skipping to attend the meeting. But, so I wouldn't oppose that either.
Okay, so that leaves.
Whoever skipped the meeting?
In the summers we have.
Sounds enticing.
Summer.
I'm not gonna lie.
And there's a opening enrollment report and those kind of things, so they'll probably create for them. I would, uh.
So our next meeting is on the tenth.
That whole week for me is gonna be where I'm gonna have to book days on your side, but so I could do anytime we.
I think it would be hard to do back-to-back weeks.
Yeah, you go week to week, wouldn't make sense.
So could we do, we could do like, could we do like the, does it have to be a Tuesday? I guess is the question.
No, as long as it's been this.
Tell me that October, the, but have to, if I'm live, have to be a Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday.
Cause what if we did the thirtieth, like bumped the twenty-fourth and did the Monday, the thirtieth? I could probably do that.
I'll do the thirtieth, fine.
That would be better, Kevin.
That's fine, me?
My, so, Greg, does that work for you?
We come back then on the eighth, right?
I could be, do either the twenty-third or the thirtieth.
Okay, sorry, I'm looking ahead to, um, stupid that. I think that would be good instead of doing it from gap a week, right?
The twenty-third would be the day before we normally would be doing it. So that was the only way.
Oh, I see. Yeah.
You know, move it ahead one day to the twenty-third and then it's a day before we would be doing it.
Thirtieth would work perfect. If, if Greg can do the thirtieth.
Oh, cause you're away that whole week. The thirtieth works fine for me. That's, that's fine.
Yeah. All right, let's just do that.
Let's do that. So I'm not sure.
I do, um, I would like to propose, sure. I would like to propose that we change this uh, school committee meeting from Tuesday, uh, nine twenty-four, twenty-four to Monday, nine thirty, twenty-four. A second, so I had all in favor?
Aye.
I.
I appreciate that.
Enjoy your daughter's wedding festivities. Where is she getting married, Rob?
Yes, for her parents. That's exciting. And if you saw family concerns.
Yep.
Yeah.
That would be it. Be it for my report and be, separate these out, Kevin, as a separate item.
Principal's report.
With that, huh? Well, thank you, Mr. Libo, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to share an update. We had a lot of activity at the school over the summer. Um, before I get started, let me add a couple of things to my report that I did not include. We have open house coming up. That's Wednesday, September fourth. And that is starting at, I'm saying doors open at five forty-five for a prompt six o'clock start. Prior to that, we're also having an event um, for parents called Navigating the Cyber World. And I sent the invite out to parents today. I'll also be inviting Swamp Stot parents to attend and educators as well as um, educators to attend. Uh, and it's about, it's from Mass- Massachusetts Partnership for Youth. And again, that, that starts at Wednesday at five. Um, so you can go, this, uh, a week, uh, a week from tomorrow, uh, Wednesday, September fourth.
Thank you.
Also that night, the YMCA is gonna hold the open house here, uh, at the school, five fifteen to seven fifteen. So if there's any families that are at the open house that night that would like to meet and greet folks from the Y who are gonna be running the after school, after school program. They are, um, you are welcome to come and meet with them, talk to them about their program and their offerings. It's also the night we'll be having the book fair. So this is gonna be an all-around carnival at the Johnson School.
Yeah.
Lots to see, lots to do. And um, it'll be the usual fair with the open house. Uh, I'll give a brief overview of the school year followed by two programs by the teachers that will be identical. And then there'll be additional time to attend the, uh, the fair or the uh, visit with the Y.
What's the date on that, Mr.?
September fourth, and that'll be starting, the, the, all the events start at five. And we'll probably wrap up by seven thirty, definitely wrap up by seven thirty. And we're starting to use Parent Square more for that, so I did an RSVP for that. Uh, for the cyber world, I'll do them on separate nights. I don't wanna blast everybody in one night, but kind of sprinkle those out in the next few days, uh, so that folks can see what's on their calendar. Um, related to that, we started using the digital form feature in Parent Square. So you are not seeing a welcome back to school packet with things to fill out that we already probably have on our file somewhere. Uh, so you'll instead, you're instead getting forms that ask you to recognize the student handbook policies and so forth. And so hopefully, um, you're finding that to be uh, more user-friendly. Uh, and then uh, to the uh, formal report. In the area of students, families and community, as I mentioned, uh, after school program. Uh, I've been meeting with them. I am running what I'm calling the interim after school program. Um, so this is the in-between time, not at all.
Thank you.
Not at all. It's hard, it's hard to staff these programs. And I think that, um, you know, we're continuing to find that in education as well as in after school world. But um, we do have a site coordinator in Sarah Osborne. Um, the Y is in the process of onboarding her, but in the meantime, she's working for the school. And um, and Julie Weber is helping out as well. So two familiar faces for the students as we open. The summer enrichment program went fabulously, I think. Um, I really enjoyed it. I was able to use a lot of lessons that I developed over the years with my science background with the students to get them excited about coming to school each day and they seem engaged and, um, and did some learning as well. Have uh, some things to report about, uh, in the area of technology. We rolled out our iMacs. You can see them here. There's uh, one of them. All the classroom teachers each have a new iMac on their desk to speed things up. That came about from uh, last year at efforts. Uh, in addition, we were able to use some S R three funds to purchase iPad minis that classroom teachers will have and a pencil. iPad pencil that they'll use for dibbles. That's the reading assessment. They'll use that for attendance. They're also gonna be able to use that to control their iMac and a slideshow on the screen. It's gonna work sort of like a smart board where they could write something on their iMac, I mean, on their iPad. And then the projector will show it on the screen. Uh, they can also use it like a document camera, so they can turn the camera on and, and hold it over a student worm. Um, so there's gonna be some professional development around that. I'll be getting, um, nine of those.
And then the work would bounce up on the screen?
Yes. So the iMac's gonna, the, the iPad is gonna mirror the iMac. And the iMac projects to the screen.
Nice.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Well, I'm excited about that. Um, in addition, uh, special education staff members will, um, be receiving MacBooks for their use on their, uh, special ed reports. I often, I see the special ed staff showing up to meetings with their own devices, which are, we're welcome to use and I'm happy they're having them. Um, typically they're a little bit older. They purchased them themselves, not provided by the school and we had an opportunity to do that here. Uh, again, through some, um, final S R funds. In the area of curricular instruction, we're adding digital math this year. Uh, we've had digital math in the back and in the past with everyday math. But again, um, the state is closing out the S R funding this month and so, uh, we need to finish using up what we have. And so we'll have licenses K to six for students to access the online component of everyday math. That's in addition to IXL. Uh, in the area of buildings and grounds, um, I have to say Jose Garcia has done a fantastic job getting the building ready for the school. Uh, he's painted many classrooms, uh, the entire sixth grade classroom got painted, the art rooms, second grade and the first grade and the STEM rooms, uh, the front wall was painted because those ones get the most wear. Uh, so he got around to them. He stripped door eleven and twelve, took them all the way down in bare metal and put new paint back up. Looks great. Uh, he worked on the cafeteria wall and the library wall. We had to waterproof the wall cause they, they leak water from the outside or, no, I should say seep. It's not a leak, it's a seep to the concrete. So we put a concrete sealer on there, scraped them, concrete sealer and then painted. So he's done a lot of great work and we were able to do that because we had not just Jose, but also Vinnie and James all at the same time in a period of time, as well as a, a former alumni of the school, uh, who was helping. So we had a ni- a nice team over the summer. Uh, on the next page, I have the, uh, the groundwork that we've done over the summer. Uh, the boulder scramble was installed. That is, uh, funding through CP, C money or CPA, CPA money. Rather, uh, Community Preservation Act. We had a, a fifteen thousand dollar grant for that. Uh, so we actually came in under budget and, uh, put boulders in the forest playgrounds. We also added a, a pine tree there because we're losing some of the pine trees as they age out, we think. We're not really quite sure what's happening, but uh, we wanna make sure that we'll have trees there in the future. So you gotta plant a tree if you lose a tree. Uh, I have a picture of the interpretive sign. Those were donated to the school by the garden club as part of that grant. Um, and then the last picture shows a cleared hillside that was full of invasive species. This had Rosa multiflora and, um, other vines. We saved the few trees that were in there. And we hope they'll spread. The main goal was to get the thorns out and the invasive things that, you know, these this Rosa multiflora was originally planted for birds to eat the berries in the forties, but they don't like those berries. They don't like nesting in there. Uh, they, they kill other plants. And so, um, D L landscaping was able to remove those for us. Uh, so that was some great work. On the flash road side of the playground, we had, uh, three gardens and so, well, six garden, actually I bought three garden habitats. It was actually six garden habitats, uh, two sets of three. Uh, each with, uh, the idea is to not just have a tree, but have a tree with shrubs around it that you'd find in a forest. And then it plants around that. So it's not a full garden like you might see in a, a house. Uh, the idea is to rehabilitate this area so that it's not just all lawn. Uh, and that students be able to play in, in and amongst the areas. They're not running through these areas right now because they're, you know, young plants. Um, there's an oak tree picture there, um, but we hope over time they'll mature and, um, and be fun places for the students to be. And then you can see a picture of the new slide that was installed. That was installed also with the, um, help of G and J, um, and an inspector from New England Playgrounds. Um, that looked at the site plan and will be, uh, checking out the, uh, final installation. Kids were great about not going up the slide or around it because we don't have the marks there yet and isn't quite complete.
Yeah.
And, oh, and one more piece about the building was that we also had some screens put on the UN events outside of the school. Uh, we had problems with mice in the past and teachers have reported that it'd seen mice jumping into the UN events. Um, on the inside of the UN event, we do have a screen, but you can't get at it, uh, without taking the whole heater off. So we put a, a matching screen on the outside. Um, that was done by Amati and, uh, we'd also purchased, um, push vacuums and sweep and, uh, dust painting brooms for the classrooms, just so that we can keep the crumbs down.
Yeah.
Whatever we can do to deter mice, uh, and James have been. And James has been going around patching small spots where there used to be a water fitting or a little hole in the building. So doing whatever we can to respond to that, keep the building clean, and looking great. So thanks to, again, to Jose and James, we get the building ready. They did a fabulous job as they always do. And we were open and ready for business today. The front of your report shows some students heading down the hall with their bags of loot from Target, it looks like. So they had, they really came in excited and, from what I heard, had a wonderful first day of school. As did I, and I, Mr. Libo did as well.
That's great.
Stars and kids and parents.
Yeah, there's a lot of great energy this morning.
That concludes our report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I don't think we have any old business, so we can move on to new business.
You have some of programs with Kevin, a quick recap.
Oh, actually, yes. And I did speak to that in my report unless there's any other questions. Went off with that a hitch.
So review of the opening days of school regarding PD and first day.
I think we've alluded to the energy.
Yes.
Where you think you're working, the opening PD for teachers was excellent, I think, in terms of the dibbles. And I made a little PowerPoint, which is unique, kind of.
It was very unique and very well done.
Truly who I am, and I'm gonna attribute what was, what I believed in, what my philosophy was. I sent that out to the staff. I'll send it to those who depend on it, but it doesn't have a narrative with it, so you might say, well, why did you put that there for? But I'll, I'll put it in Drive so you can at least have that. And not that. Put an opening tool that I've seen. I got the ten AM flag raising, annual flag raising today. All the kids were right there, the pledge of allegiance. Jose Garcia did the honors with two kids that came out and helped push the flag up. It's the first time I've seen that. It was awesome.
Great. It's really nice.
Feels good.
Wonderful. The kids had a great first day. Moving on to contract negotiation wars.
And the only part here is see if you folks would deliberate and appoint your two members to the negotiating team. The ones from the teachers team are Natty, Fodaro and Fred Lucian. I met with them today, just to sort of lay the groundwork. And said that tonight, hopefully you folks will appoint your two reps. They're hoping that Tuesdays would be an acceptable day for a meeting. So it would either be before a school committee meeting marathon. You know, one night with one activity or on those odd nights. And the goal at least I had, and if you endorse that, is to try to get going fairly quickly. And so that you have some idea of where things are at by the time you get too far into budget time. So that that's not an obstruction to that. They are willing to do that. I have some proposed ground rules that we would talk about, that you folks would obviously have input in, they would have input into. There's a calculator that I've always used for the scale itself that allows either side to have it. And just plug in, what if this happened? What if that happened? And it basically runs the entire operation, says, well, it would cost you this, it would cost you that. And then the language things obviously would be about different sorts of things. The first set of meetings, the first one would just be introduce each other and who ground rules and set meetings. The second one would be, would be to exchange proposals. Then folks would have a couple of extra meetings to add proposals, and then there'd be negotiations, meetings. The goal of trying to get to a satisfactory resolution. By the number, if possible.
So it is possible.
That would be my goal. So all you would do tonight is if you could entertain, body two names and I'll step to the first meeting with those folks. Go from there.
And it's two people that sit on this committee now?
What's that?
Two people that sit on this committee now?
Yeah. It doesn't have to be two, but you could do it with one. Except that doesn't sort of bring along the next person if that board member is not there anymore. Then there's a whole new learning phase, so sometimes, or as you'll do, you can't have more than two because you're establishing a forum. So that typically there's somebody who has some experience with negotiations and then someone who would like to learn and be part of that as the sort of tag team person. And that way you have continuity going forward in the processes. You would not only have the teacher negotiation, right after that, you'd have the sports staff negotiation, because both those contracts are up this year.
I'm, I'm pretty interested in this anyway. I do do a lot of teacher contract negotiations, but not in a unionized environment. And so that, that's both, I would fit both of those categories of new and some experience. That's certainly amateur when it comes, with the exception of, I was on this committee when we worked through the contract, the last contract. And that was interesting. This would be more, more involved.
Yeah, I'd be willing to, I had it too. I was involved in my last negotiations. For both of them.
Great.
And if you felt like you needed some of the force, we're so happy to sit back as well. If Greg or Brianna, if you want to do it. You know?
Nope.
I can't get it.
I think I should learn first and then hopefully be here for extra negotiations.
And we would be able to give the board updates periodically in executive session of.
Yeah, we did that last one.
What the issues, what are the obstacles? Because you folks would ultimately have to approve any deal. So have that sort of hit you at the last moment, it'd be a difficult kind of thing. So I would think every school committee, it's not like we've had a previous negotiation. You get an update on what happened in executive session.
My one shortfall is if it could, it would be hard for me to do every Tuesday, so if it could be an hour early on the school committee nights, that would be a lot easier for me to be able to do it.
Yeah, that, that would actually work better.
Yeah.
To have it on a school committee night.
Yeah, it just starts and do it six.
Those ground rules talk about a meeting length of no longer than about, less mutually extended, after two hours.
So it would be five.
If I were tired or whatever.
Does it have to be two hours?
No, and I think an hour. Both sides are prepared well.
Yes.
In advance.
Right.
Have prepared their teams.
Yep.
We can do a lot in a, in an effective hour.
Right.
And then at some point, the two members that get appointed, I think, need to decide what type of role want your superintendent to play in that. Some places, they're just advisors to the board. And I've always been involved in a pretty help people through the issues, almost like a mediator and provide all the background information. And say, you could, yes, you could do that. This is what would happen.
Yeah, in our last, I think Tony, he wanted to let, he let.
Yes.
We were the supporters.
And that's basically what I did in Rockport. I led the negotiation, but I didn't wanna come here thinking, hey, this is what I do with my folks. And no, you don't.
Lead away, Rob.
You sit over there.
Yes, please.
And I think they're fine with that. The other thing is part of the ground rules, and they're theoretical. Some teams, you could go right on now, go to the Mascanon website and pull up their public negotiations. That they voted to have their negotiating meeting be in public, so people can come, their staff can come and wear T-shirts with certain colors or all that. That's not the way you should propose to do it. I think it should be behind closed doors so that it's just the teams, but.
Yeah, we wanna build an environment right where, I mean, we're all on the same, we're all on the same team. And, and, and people have different points of view, you know, in getting there, you know, Mr. Sean, Mr. Fodaro. Really top notch, experienced educators.
Yeah, I'm also interested if we could do it of having interest based negotiations so that they're a they're a win win. You don't hide stuff.
Hundred percent.
You exchange your views. You say why or why not? You don't play games with numbers and put them out here thinking maybe you'll end there. Me, that's just a waste of time.
Yes.
You don't be realistic. Try to legitimately say why you can do X or Y or can't do X or Y.
Right.
And not have it as a bargaining chip that, well, we're gonna do that if you give us this. To me, that doesn't build good relationships. The other thing that I think's important in the way we do business is that reps that come from the union's office, that they be consultants not sitting in the room while the meeting is going on. And the same thing, if you, if they had a consultant, you might wanna have your school lawyer, if you had one, sitting here at the same time. When I walked into Rockport, there was the school lawyer and the MTA person. They're the only people that talked. And they had negotiated against each other in all of the North Shore, Gloucester, Danvers. And they were not great friends. And I said, this is foolish. The school committee never said anything. The teachers never said anything. These two higher dividends, for lack of a better word. Bought it back and forth. And I don't think that fits well in a school district like you have. That it's a eye to eye with the people that work for you. The ground rules talk about leaving them out of it. And you get to a meeting, you're almost gonna say, we're gonna TA this. But we'd like to have the right to ask our rep, well, what did we just do between now and the next meeting? So you do a TA one and a TA two. You tentatively agree, and then you nail it at the next meeting that we agree. Because you might wanna call your lawyer or whatever. What's the spin off of what we just did? They might wanna call their rep at the, at the central office, that would be no way. Just done, or agreed to, or what should we do? And have those people not be in the room. If the things fall apart, either side has the right to say, all right, game over. We're going back to traditional bargaining practices. Including having our folks be in the room. They've got difficult. I've never been involved in a difficult negotiation since I've been a superintendent.
I just don't see this going.
Be involved in one, but twenty years we've been able to settle a fair contract, I think, that both sides have reached in four or five maximum productive meetings that people feel good about. If you folks are on board with that kind of philosophy, then.
Yes.
I'll work to make that happen.
I think as long as we're kept apprised, you know, I mean, I negotiate contracts every day in my career. So, you know, it's something that I would definitely wanna be kept in the loop of and just see the status as it goes along. So it sounds like that's what we're proposing. So, sounds good to me.
Do we need to motion? The representatives? Is that what we're looking to do here?
All you want tonight is, there's gonna be a lot of other sort of swirling background. We both either nice, but point two.
Okay, sure.
Bargaining members for the school committee team.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Beth Anderson and Patty Harris to be the two representatives for the school committee on behalf of the negotiations with the NTA.
I saw you.
All in favor? Hi. So Kelly's gonna step in. Beth, Beth. Okay. On side indeed. We have another committee.
Related to one of my goals was to bring back to life, so strategic plan that, right now, you had one, but it planned out in twenty-two. And didn't have anything for twenty-three to twenty-four. It ran through August of two thousand twenty-two. Your existing strategic plan. And what I'd like to do is get another strategic plan committee going. And to set it up as a three-year rolling strategic plan. So every year, things fall off that are either completed or no longer are pertinent. And then new items can get added, but the plan takes on a sort of life of its own and progresses. There are some places that say, no, we do a five-year strategic plan. When you get done, we do another one. I think having a rolling one is more effective. And then you have a committee that's part of that strategic plan.
So can you tell us a little bit more about what the strategic planning is? Is it like?
Yeah, they might be as simple as, we're gonna build in addition to this school. That's one of the facilities part of that strategic plan. Another might be that you're gonna adopt a certain academic approach. You know, maybe you're gonna go to all differentiated learning and self-paced learning. You're gonna, in those far-fetched ones, which was, used to be my dream, is take away grades. And you work kids through standards at their own pace flexibly. And that I might be a ten-year-old doing two years ahead of math with a group of kids that are same ability as me. But my English skills aren't so quite so good, so they're grouped on with, it's a little further back, but you progress through the standards. And teachers then aren't grade level teachers, they're concept level teachers.
That's exactly.
It's alternative.
And I love that.
But. This is my dream, small school. We could do this. I'm not as convinced that you can really pull it off and that people will really understand it. But I think if you went from thirty thousand feet and you came down here and you had a bunch of kids that needed to learn, you wouldn't just say, all right, you're in first grade. And if you happen to know the stuff, then it's not getting any further of you, well, then just hang back and wait.
Yeah.
And if you're stuck with it, we're not gonna put you in another group or try to identify why you can't get it. We're gonna just not have grants. Kids go to the Johnson Schools Academic Learning Center, progress through the standards.
Okay, so, so it's sort of like focused on the future of the school, maybe what the issues are, what we're trying to improve from it, sort of it, and then.
It's all about sort of future planning.
Yeah, okay.
Doing a corporation or whatever. We're gonna have a new product. We're gonna do whatever.
Yeah.
And it's different than just the ongoing daily stuff. It's the hopes and dreams for the future, and some of them you can accomplish, some you can't.
Rob, you tend to do your strategic name conjunction with budgeting. I've always done the hand, you know, because there's always a financial component to most strategic plans.
They talk about that as part of, but they don't let it be a barrier to the dream. You know, they, they try to have it be more about the hopes and wishes if you maybe can have financial options, possibly.
But there could be an aspirational part to the finances, for example, like that.
Say, no, this has got guardrails on it.
Yeah.
We can only present things that are definitely achievable and we can pull off. You can always move something to another year. You can roll it forward.
Exactly.
It can still be part of the dream, but that's the beauty of a three-year rolling plan is saying, we're not in the the economic position to retool this whole school like that, but since it's such a noble endeavor, let, let's keep it as something we might wanna still dream about, who knows, ten years from now.
And what resources we need to get.
Yeah.
Right, there's always other grants.
And, and the strategic planning committee will talk about what they want it to be. It's what I'm interested in tonight is who should be on that? Who should I get?
I was gonna ask, what's the composition of one of these typically, Rob?
One more time, Greg, I couldn't play here.
What's the composition of a committee like this? Would it be like one or two school committee members or a school committee or how?
Feature reps. It would have Kevin. It would have myself. It would have a couple of parents who are either. spammed out and asked for who's interested in, or you get them from the PTO. Um, it would have um maybe a municipal official. Maybe Tony would be asked to be part of it, or whatever, a couple of school committee members. And um, they meet probably once a month, and they pull together a plan that has to come back for approval to the school committee, and each year, they need to, okay, we've done this, it's no longer on the plan. Like to add that, and you will approve the next phase of the three-year rolling strategic plan. I can give you a sample of one that we used to use in Rockport. A lot of it was, I'm I'm I'd say we accomplished everything we had listed on that plan.
It's so, this is just like ringing my ears about, we've had so many decisions to make in the last two years, you know, involve of the um planning with, where the kids staying at the school, where we set it into the middle school, we found a new super, we've had so many things going on, but my ears are ringing about this because I think what we had decided was like, we really do need a strategic plan and a community-based approach to like what sort of the future looks like for
Exactly.
So I think it's, you know, it's ironic, cause it's been on my mind, and especially hearing that the elementary schools in Swamp Scott, I'm sure you've heard that the three have now joined in this brand-new beautiful school. And so I think like, all I can think of is, wow, now Hunt joins in seventh grade at the middle school. And all of these kids now are joining in um before they reach the fifth grade at the middle school, whereas before they would all meet at fifth. Right? So it's been, I've been thinking a lot about like, okay, we need to kinda get, it was on the back burner, but I think we need to figure out a way. It's a bigger disadvantage to us, in my opinion, in that situation, so I feel like this should be, I think, a big topic for the strategic planning.
Knowing the situation that you're in where your kids don't, you know, like in Rockport, they go all the way up through grade twelve.
Yeah.
They've got the ability to choice out in Rockport, Gloucester, Manchester, Essex. And some of the plan is about, well, how do we keep the kids from wanting to go to Manchester Essex and not stay in Rockport?
I mean.
Yours is a little more right in your face.
Yeah.
And um, with those small class sizes.
Yeah, so anyway, it's, you're just ringing my ears about this.
Pillars in your plan would be about
The future plan.
Sort of centered on the future of the school.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's also Right, there's a great opportunity also for us to a bring, um, we spent some time talking about uh, a blended grade model. Um, yeah, that came out of parent discussions and uh testimony and a conversation that uh, Mr. Andrews and Mr. Parent does he spends his time on. It didn't, um, we didn't have enough time for it to hold water, but this will give you the time to really flesh that out in the event. Then classes, because they are so small, and there's some volatility there, as we talked about in the meeting. This, the second part that has come up from time to time, and I think about it always, um, Mr. Andrews, when you talk about um, some of the projects that are really near your heart, is that with your science background, the placement of our school in the island. Um, I, as an educator, I think that we we not intentionally, but we undertap some of the resources that we have here around science, marine biology, conservation, et cetera. And um, it's, as a person who does do competency-based education for a very, very different community, um, a group of communities, there is some synergy with the idea of um, project-based learning. Uh, blended classrooms and something is, and um, and where we could really tap more into what is truly special. And it it really, you can't, in a way, you can't find anywhere else about.
That's exactly what
Yeah.
One of the real quick examples in in Rockport, the moment's going wrong, not because kids didn't be there, she couldn't afford to buy a house there.
Exactly.
So they were living in Gloucester or whatever, and maybe not choicing in, was how do we keep the Rockport schools going? And one of the charges of the strategic plan was, well, why don't we look at becoming an innovative school through the Massachusetts law? And work ourselves on a theme. Like uh, a school center on in Rockport, it's gonna be a fine arts. Specifically music, cause of the Shale and Bloom and all that. And then be able to attract kids not by choice, but through the innovative program from all the surrounding towns. And it would be based on the arts. Rockport Fine Arts School of whatever. Now, it never happened, but it was a dream in that plan, and it was a way to keep the role of the Rockport kids over there, you would bring in more than the choice kids. Well, that's not the kind of phase you would have.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's it an example of what a strategic plan and dreams about. And then it comes to you, and you have to then make those things happen in reality.
Exactly. I volunteer to be on the Strategic Planning Committee. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you guys know, I loved being on the school committee, but I I haven't, I've been saying for months that I was gonna not stay much longer, much longer, but I I don't anticipate that I'll stay the whole year, but I definitely see myself at least transitioning to helping that sort of capacity.
So much to say.
Different negotiations, I would like to some fixed idea of how it how it was gonna come out, it would be more facilitating.
Yeah.
And as many stakeholders you could have. Or two.
I I can put my name forward for it as well.
And then a town official. We could get Tony to be part of it, not take too much of his time, I think that'd be ideal.
I'd be too.
And then it's, how do we select parent? And community input.
I would spam it out and see who's interested. Let's spam it out and see who's interested.
Your parents where? Spread the word too.
You don't want it to be too huge, it becomes unwieldy, so.
Well, if it were, let's say fifty people apply, it's not gonna happen. But if if they did, right, like, that's a happy problem, and then you can kind of like do a random lottery or something.
Yeah, or first come, first served.
First come, first served.
I actually think it might be more popular than It's great.
Think of any other members that should be there.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing this up.
Is there anyone else that we wish?
I wonder if Robert tires, he chose to win town. And my guess, maybe somebody from the Council on Aging. But, yeah, I I definitely can we can spread the word. I think I think parents would really be interested in something like that. I I think.
You do hear that in most surveys, the nineteen people that weighed in is, you know, find a way to keep kids wanting to stay.
Yes, yeah.
That's begging for that kind of
Yeah, I agree.
And watching our dwindling numbers, there are other people that are concerned.
That's right, exactly. Say it again.
That was one of the major parental threats. Trying to keep this viable school.
Yeah.
But there's like, there's a healthy ecology committee, I mean, um, uh, population here, we don't really care about um, climate. There's artists, you know, here, um, and there's a lot, there's, there's one, the sailing club is huge, does tons of things. There's lots of people that provide here for for our kids that are necessarily in the school system, you know, that I think we can tap into, that you're really actually great about tapping into every year with, you know, keeping this to all kinds of things that happen in the historical society. Um, for people with the garden, then everybody like to go on the street, um, for the days, and um, yeah.
I don't know if this, I don't know why it would be a conflict, but I almost wonder if it would be helpful to have a teacher from a Swamp Scott school also be part of it, like, my, maybe I could give my sister, yeah. Um, whether it's a middle school teacher, or staff, or high school, I mean, I think like the bridge might help, it might help us kind of bridge the two together. Um, just that, I'm gonna ask my sister, I'm saying that.
Base membership of the committee decided they wanted to expand to like our at-large seat or something like that.
Yeah. My sister does, yeah. So I could see if she could try and join.
And my my neighbor across the street actually is a long, live on, Justin, you might know him, Mariana Gilston. He's looked here a long, long, long time. He bought his own house.
Do you see him?
Uh, maybe he's a teacher, like an eighth-grade teacher.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
The time commitment, the negotiations is gonna sort of be right up. But it's, I'm not gonna put this off to spring. But I would think we'd have an initial organizational get some initial thoughts on on paper. Show it like before that.
Yeah, great, I think that's great.
Um, I make a motion to uh, appoint, accept the volunteering spirit of um, Liana Mariana to the uh, committee, needs the strategic planning committee. On behalf of the school to represent the school.
Who have a second? Isaac. Now, we have one more item under new business, and that is reminders.
That's all it is.
Oh.
There is a state law that says, within a year of becoming a member of the school committee, thou shalt get eight hours of training in other than be a board member.
If you maybe didn't do that.
Yeah.
And you're not new.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any checking on this, so I don't think there's anyone in Gessie that says, proof to me that all of your board members are certified in chartering reports. Uh, the dream is you learn about board relationships, uh, relationship to the superintendent, what you can do, what you can't do. Um, open meeting law, this is probably the biggest public records law, conflict of interest. But it does involve going away for a day. Some locations, like two that are presently hosted are in uh
Plymouth and North Adams.
It used to be online, and they they took that option away, so that's why.
Oh, okay. They don't do it at all online anymore?
I don't think so. I don't understand.
And I think there was just a meeting in Burlington, maybe in like June.
I'm sorry, Burlington in June?
No, there was one in Burlington that just happened, I'm saying a little bit closer in location.
And and you would be reimbursed for your mileage and or pace to go, but if there's a fee for chartering a horse. Not Johnson School pays for that, but it does mean Marion says you some stage work. To go and
And you like.
My only job is to remind board members, it's our responsibility when they're here to do it. There's your information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other committee business that we'd like to discuss?
Uh, we have a announcement.
Yes, um, I have an announcement that um, our first-grade teacher is going to be leaving the school. Uh, um, Molly Santora has taken a job in Connecticut, um, outside of teaching.
Outside?
Um, and um, she's gonna be, she's uh, informing parents tonight. Um, she'll be here for, she's, she'll definitely be here for three weeks.
Okay.
Um, and um, first time here to look for a new teacher.
Yeah.
Um, and but we've already advertised it. Um, and you know, Rob and I met on it today to think about some some strategic ways that we could fill this gap. Um, so it is unfortunate.
It is, especially that she has to start and then leave, that's tough on the kids.
Yeah.
That's really tough on the kids.
Yeah.
All we know is enough, which is skill her, or she's not jumping, or unhappiness or anything like that. Uh, her letter was very positive. It is what it is. We are trying to solve it, and I don't think there's a rich applicant pool probably at this time. And um, there are some possibilities internally. We have to sort of run through.
Yeah. Can you remind me, please, who the other first grade?
It's Maddie Fadera.
Okay.
So we have fifteen students in Ms. Santora's class, and we have thirteen in Ms. Fadera's class.
Okay.
So twenty-eight altogether.
Okay, thanks.
That was the first thing we wondered.
Yeah.
It has computers, but it's not a massive fourth grade either, the combined twenty-three.
That's right.
Right? There's a possibility of shift, this or that. Uh, related to that, we, part of the discussion, there's a um new student probably coming, without putting any details, who would require EL services. So, assigned mobility, all Portuguese, uh, from Brazil, to the Hong, uh, and we don't have any EL program. So we're gonna have to find out how we deal with that particular aspect.
Oh, what grade?
Fourth grade.
We believe that.
Twenty-three, twenty-four. So.
They haven't registered fully yet, but they came to uh, inquire and um, so.
If it's Gloucester, they would be plugged into the EL program, and the person who's hired will see the EL program. Kevin said, well, that's what Tony did. He called Tony and goes, what are you talking about? I had a NEO once when I was whatever.
Yeah.
So we don't have any operation for that. But it's part of the whole sort of staffing situation, possibly, what you can or can't do, depending on what our posting provides us.
Yeah.
Maybe there'll be a teacher out there that says, you know, maybe young, it was mid-year. Believe it or not, someone resigning mid-year, sometimes you get a January graduate from a school who's already been from school teaching. So first job is just like, I remember the year. It's unfortunate, but it's it's good for Molly and and it's a part of her career range. Something there is, so.
Could I ask you a favor, Mr. Andrews? If you get the next meeting, you could just bring a breakdown of how many kids we have in each grade and who the teachers are.
Sure, yeah. It's, it's not online, but it's um, it's on my fingertips.
Do you mind? Is that okay?
No, and and I can, I can send it to you before then.
Alright, that'd be great. I just, it just helps me to see it like, laid out, you know?
The other terms, like where there was most of the parts, you know, um, one's the one that had, it's like a grid, and it went by year of how the kids are going from one class to the next, and what the numbers look like in the class, you know, and you kind of read it like this.
Over cohort, yeah, the cohort.
Yeah.
You know, the same group of students.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can generate one of those, and I'll email you the, and you looking for class, grade, no?
Number per class and the teachers, yeah.
You got it.
Thanks. Okay, well, if there's anything we can do, please let us know.
Sure, thanks, for the words.
I'd reach out to the teachers too, they might know someone.
Mm-hmm, we have a lot of teachers who are recently in school.
Yeah.
So, good idea.
Oh, my, are there any other announcements?
No, I was like, oh no.
Should I make a motion?
Yes, no other announcements.
Um, can I make an emotion, please, to adjourn our meeting at eight twenty-five P M?
Have a second?
Second. Call in favor.
Hi.
Bye, Greg.
Bye, Greg.
Sorry, I couldn't make it.
It does.
It was great to see you all.
Oh, shoot, were we supposed to have made a motion to change the school committee? Or I did that already.
Nope, you did that.
I was like, oh, shoot.
Now I could go play in a golf tournament out in Western Mass past Springfield, so, thank you all. Have a great night.
Yeah, you too.
Thanks.
So I am not here for the September tenth.
Sure, I'd be passing this computer too.
I can do it.
Are you sure?
Yes.